Hello, how are you?
Evening colleagues.
Well, I don't know about you colleagues, but there's nowhere else I'd rather be. Before I formally start the business meeting of City Council, could I remind members to use the microphones when speaking this evening, make sure that everyone in the room and watching online is able to hear everything? Can we have apologies, please?
Thank you, lovemate. We have apologies from councillors Pauline Allen, Peter Allen, Kemp, Lausen, Rahman, Dave Wood, Margaret Wood, Stevie Wood, Karen Robinson, Nix, Joanne.
Thank you very much. Are there any others? No? Move on to the minutes of the last meeting. Does council agree to the minutes of the meeting held on the 1st of October 2025? Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Last month, I raised the fact that the elected members on Students to Newcastle Forum appointed by council had been summarily booted off. We've had a response back from our legal team saying it is up to the members of such groups to decide their future and how they should be formulated. As a member of that group, I was never consulted on the future of Students to Newcastle Forum. I have always found it a very useful forum for sometimes frank exchange of views both ways, and I don't believe that councillor Ali, Airam Ali, has the authority to simply remove elected members from a forum that they have been appointed to by council. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Did I see someone else's hand up there? Yes, councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. At the last meeting, council agreed that the coach station situation should be referred to Cabinet and then subsequently come back to City Council with an update. I just wondered whether that was still in progress.
Anybody have an update?
Yeah? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a point of order around a matter of clarity, and I wonder if councillor Kane might like to respond to it as well. Just to be absolutely clear, despite councillor Kane's comments, the cabinet member has not made a decision to remove anybody. That's, I presume, not a deliberate lie, but it's certainly a factual inaccuracy.
I don't think you want to use words like that, Dewey.
Well, exactly. That's why I said factual inaccuracy. So, yeah, that is factually inaccurate. It's actually quite accusing, and I would say a breach of the Members' Code of Conduct to accuse councillor Ali of such an act. Particularly when it was round applause from the other side. This is an external meeting by an external organisation, and an external organisation has chosen to wind up that meeting. It is not the council's responsibility to appoint people. The council's decision to unappoint people.
Okay, thank you councillor Powers.
Lord Mayor, councillor Powers asked me to respond.
Is this necessary councillor Kane?
Well, he asked me to respond.
Okay.
To take a group which has elected members appointed to it by council, say that that's not going to happen, but we're going to do it with the same purpose but without elected members, it's a farce to believe that that is not the same group minus elected members. You know, it's splitting hairs. How I described it is perfectly accurate. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Can we move on, please? Official announcements. Can we have quiet, please? I'd like to remind members that you will have received an invitation to join me to pay our respects at the Remembrance Sunday service at the War Memorial in Ellen Square on the 9th of November. I hope you can attend either this or one of the other services taking place across the city that day. 25th of November is International Day for the Elimination of Violence Against Women and Girls, also known as White Ribbon Day. It marks the start of the 16 Days of Activism, where we can all speak up to and call for an end to all forms of gender-based violence. Please join with me in wearing the white ribbon on the 25th of November to show your support. You will find them probably by your seat, but obviously there is a table outside, and I'm sure you've picked one up. Can I also encourage you to consider what you can do in your wards during the 16 Days of Activism to speak up not just about domestic violence, but all forms of abuse, be they psychological, sexual, economic or emotional? Finally, a request has been received to remove item 16 from the agenda, which is the notice of motion on anti-stigma approach for Newcastle City Council. Is council agreed to remove that from the agenda?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Correspondence. One item of correspondence has been received. Does council agree to receive the correspondence from the mayor of the North East Combined Authority? Agreed, thank you. Petitions? There are no petitions this month. So we now come to public question time. Two requests to address council have been accepted before the agenda. Standing Order 11A of the Council Procedure Rules allow a continuous period of up to 15 minutes to allow members of the public to ask questions or to address the council. Witness responses will be provided if the time limit is exceeded. So we come to question one. Can I invite Jennifer Walker through to address council regarding pavements, drop curbs and illegal parking for Class 2 mobility scooter users?
Give me these other sheets of paper, please.
What do you want, Jenny? Okay.
My old mayor, leader, thank you for your time. My name is Jenny. I'm almost 90 years of age and I live alone in Newcastle. I've worked all my life, paid my taxes, raised my family, in addition to serving almost 50-plus years in our amazing NHS. But now I feel very unsafe in this city which I love. My mobility, as you have gathered, is severely compromised, and to enable me to remain independent, I purchased what's called a Class 2 mobility scooter. This is designated by the DVLA as a scooter to be used for pavement use only at the wonderful maximum speed of four miles per hour, so I'm not very likely to run you over. I need to visit the shops, my doctor and friends, and in general feel less dependent. Sadly, rather than becoming the pleasant experience that I had anticipated, driving anywhere alone proved to be a very, very daunting and possibly dangerous experience. In many streets and even major main roads, there are no dropped curbs, which means I am unable to access on and sometimes very even off the pavement, having managed to get on it. I've gone as far as a quarter of a mile in my local locality before now, got to the very end and not been able to get off, and have had to reverse along a very narrow pavement parked with cars. This means that I'm unable to access the places I need to go to. They may be blocked by antisocial pavement parking, bicycles, scooters, toys, wheelie bins, you name it, I've seen it. So I'm often forced onto the road legally. I am not allowed to drive on the road with a Class 2 scooter. Driving my scooter toward oncoming traffic when I've had to get off the pavement because I couldn't get through, where I've been shouted at, sworn at, I feel very frightened and disrespected. I should not have to risk my life to get to the shops. Last time but one that I was out, I met a gentleman who was almost in tears, and he said, "I've been mocked at, I've been told you're lazy, there's nothing wrong with you." And this was a war veteran who'd lost both his legs fighting for our country. That gives you some idea of the extent of the abuse that some of us suffer. This may sound like a good old granny grouch, but let me assure you, I am not alone in this. I'm approached regularly by other significant users, visually impaired folks, people with guide dogs, ladies with babies in prams and possibly a toddler in tow, frail and elderly people. These pavements are our roads, and lack of such becomes disability discrimination. I have with me a quote, I'm not quite sure what Naveel has done with it. Where's those two pieces of paper? Open it up, please, and give me these, and the other one. Thank you. I have with me here a quote from a government UK paper from Transport Secretary announcing plans to make pavements accessible for all, and this grandly is dated 31st of August 2020, and I don't think we've moved two inches from that. "New plans set out to boost safety and make journeys more accessible for disabled people and parents." The review found that third of people with visual impairments and almost half of wheelchair users were not willing to go out because of antisocial pavement parking. Finally, if I'm blocked in with my scooter, who's going to get me home? Do I pick up my bike and hike? No way. Or worse still, if I have an accident, who's going to get me home? Or whose fault is it going to be? If I have an accident through no fault of my own, other than I cannot lack pavement access, who is responsible? Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Can I now call on councillor Sathian to respond, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer, for raising this important matter and for sharing your experience with the council, truly appreciate. I also want to recognise your lifetime of service to our city and to the NHS. Your dedication represents the very best of Newcastle.
All right, yeah. Do you want to come to the desk, please? And then, because she's having difficulty hearing you, but if you come here and speak into the microphone there, Jennifer will be able to hear you because you'll be next to her. Thank you.
Can I sit down? I'm profoundly deaf, don't be embarrassed. I'm having a bit of wood, Mr Bean. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Jennifer, for raising this important matter. Can you hear me? All right. Can you hear me now? All right, thank you so much, and for sharing your experience with the council, really appreciate that. And I also want to recognise your lifetime of services to our city and to the NHS. Your dedication represents the very best of Newcastle. So you are right to highlight how essential accessibility is for those who rely on mobility scooters and other aids to move independently. Everyone should feel safe and respected when travelling around the city, that's a fact. As you have correctly stated, Class 2 mobility scooters... As you have correctly stated, class two mobility scooters are legally designated for pavement use only and not permitted on road except for crossing. Using a class two mobility scooter on the road could potentially be subjected to enforcement action by either the police or the local highway authority. We know that pavements aren't always fully accessible and that can make life very difficult for residents using mobility scooters or wheelchairs. The cause of the obstruction determines who is responsible and it's not always the highway authority. In the event of an incident, liability would depend on individual circumstances and be assessed by the insurers. For example, if a pavement or drop curve is blocked by a parked car, the driver is responsible. When parking restrictions or a drop curve are in place, the city council can take enforcement action, but if there isn't any, we could rely on the police. If an overgrown hedge is causing an obstruction, that's the property owner's responsibility and the council can take enforcement action if needed. And during roadworks, contractors must ensure that the safe and accessible alternative routes are provided, including rams where necessary. If they fail to do that, the highway authority can take enforcement action. Having said all these, if there are specific locations where there are no drop curves in place to allow access to footway, then we will be happily consider the provision of drop curves to provide access. These should be requested via email to the traffic management team, which the email I can provide. It may be possible to install a limited number of drop curves during the current financial year, however, more extensive scheme with numerous facilities would need to be prioritised along other requests for service citywide against the limited budget available. Our wider aim through Newcastle's movement strategy is to make our streets more accessible and inclusive by improving drop curves, enforcing against obstruction and ensuring safer alternative during works. Again, if there are any locations where you regularly encounter difficulties, please report them so that officers can investigate. Our goal is to ensure no residents feel unsafe or excluded when travelling around Newcastle. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jennifer, do you want to say anything? You can have a minute. No?
No, thank you very much indeed. The bad news is I'm profoundly deaf and I heard about a third of what you were saying. I'd be extremely grateful if I could hear the transcript. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. A point of order, yes?
Thank you for your indulgence, Lord Mayor. I'm just raising this because I'm conscious that on the last two meetings, we've had disabled people who have really struggled to get in and out of this chamber. And we heard from the gentleman who came about the coach station, he had real problems leaving this chamber and the building. I just want to make it clear that I think we need to look very carefully at what we're doing to make our chamber a result of everybody.
Well, councillor Stone, I'm not sure it is a point of order, but I understand your sentiments because, as you know, after the last meeting, I was trying to help a gentleman downstairs and I gather extra arrangements are in place now to ensure that those with movement difficulties are able to leave the building. So thank you for that. Right, can I call on Brian Moore, please, to address council regarding the junction of Gosforth High Street, Church Road and Salters Road?
Please feel free to clap at the end of mine as well if you'd like to. Dear councillor, the junction of Gosforth High Street, Church Road and Salters Road is frequently becoming blocked by vehicles, preventing traffic from moving in any direction. This has led to an increase in dangerous driving behaviour. May I remind council that this junction is the main arterial route for buses travelling north, south and east-west through Gosforth? May I also remind council that this junction is also used by emergency vehicles, which is critical, given the junction's proximity to the Freeman, RVI and Gosforth Fire Station? The community, yes, the community, is asking for a yellow box to be implemented to prevent traffic gridlocked by keeping the junction clear for vehicles to flow through. This is achieved by prohibiting drivers from entering the box if their exit is not clear, ensuring that a vehicle's movement doesn't block the cross traffic. As we have seen with the nearby Christian Road junction, unless there is enforcement via cameras, using the civil enforcement of moving traffic contraventions designation Order two thousand twenty-three, that some drivers will just ignore the yellow box. It would be appreciated if the council can confirm that a yellow box will be implemented if cameras will be installed for enforcement and what other realistic timescales, please?
Councillor Seathen?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Moore, for the question. The concerns you have raised about the junction at Gosforth High Street, Church Road and Salters Road are well understood. The proposed changes to Gosforth High Street are transport improvements which are specifically aimed at supporting more reliable best services, improve road safety, create better transport links and encourage active travel around the Gosforth High Street area. The scheme is still in development and we are currently undertaking modelling to understand the impact of intervention across our network. We will continue to engage with residents, businesses and stakeholders. Our initial consultation stage resulted in over eleven hundred comments being received which are being used to shape the final design. The issue of introducing a yellow box at the High Street-Salters Road junction was identified as part of the feedback to the consultation held earlier this year on the best service improvement plan proposals for Gosforth. We intend to take this forward as part of the wider proposals which are currently being modelled to determine the impact on the wider road network. Now, in terms of enforcement and cameras, it would not be possible to install a camera straightaway. The Department for Transport requires councils to first collect evidence that drivers are actually breaking the yellow box rules before a camera can be added. Once that evidence is gathered, the junction can then be placed on the city's priority list for enforcement cameras. I hope to bring an update on the scheme over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, if you'd like to give a reply, you have one minute to do so.
Thank you, councillor, for a very comprehensive reply. That was really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, thank you. Item seven, transport presentation. I will now invite Cathy Massarella, Director of Nexus, to address council. Members are welcome to ask questions following the presentation. And may I ask that all replies be given together at the end? Cathy?
Lord Mayor, and members of the council, thank you for this opportunity to provide an update to you on Nexus's operations this year. I'll start with a reminder about Nexus. We're a train operating company, a rail infrastructure manager and a passenger transport executive. We deliver three hundred and sixty metro services, a hundred and seventy bus contracts and sixty ferry services on a daily basis across Tynan Wyr. This is all whilst managing the challenges of a varied infrastructure base, including trains, boats, tunnels, tracks, overhead lines, interchanges and ferry landings. We support twenty-seven million concessionary travel journeys per year. We provide transport information across the region, including at over six thousand bus stops, and we're developing and evolving and improving smart ticketing offer. We're also the transport delivery arm of the North East Combined Authority, reinforcing public transport's vital role as an enabler to jobs, skills, education and housing. We're driven by our overarching mission to make public transport great for our environment, economy and communities. Last year, I led my update to you by referring to the unprecedented speed and scale of transformation that our business was experiencing. This journey has certainly continued in twenty twenty-five, focusing on delivery in your city. In August, work began on a two million pound project to install the first new automatic ticket gates in the Tynan Wyr Metro in more than a decade at Regent Centre. Part of a wider package of transport investment spearheaded by the North East American McGuinness, this will help this busy station be more safe and secure, as well as helping to lower fare evasion. And the project to improve the park and ride facilities at Callerton will better connect residential housing growth to employment and opportunities across the region. Our ongoing investment in infrastructure has also seen track and overhead line replaced at key sections of the network across Newcastle. We continue to support major events in the city, from being the travel partner for North East Pride and partnering with the Masala Festival to celebrate Asian arts and culture, to supporting Newcastle Restaurant Week and Tiny Two, helping to encourage people into the city centre. We know we play a key role in ensuring large-scale events run smoothly, and this year we drafted in many volunteers to help operations during the NUFC Cup Parade, Sam Fender concerts and the Great North Run, all key events in this year's history. In twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, the metro system carried over thirty million customer journeys. Roughly eighty percent of those journeys were made by adults, but that still meant six point six million of those journeys were made by young people, allowing them to get to better opportunities. This year to date, we are achieving our patronage target. We continue to focus on delivering a reliable service, ensuring the trains run regularly, rather than a punctual one or waste a timetable, as our research tells us that's what customers value. We ask customers to use a range of information sources to plan their journeys. Importantly, metro performance is showing continued improvement. When I spoke to you last year, reliability was only twenty-one percent and punctuality was at seventy-six percent. Over the past year, we've risen to ninety-five percent reliability and punctuality over eighty percent. So the performance improvement plans we've developed with our partners at Stadler are proving to have a positive impact. Last year, when I spoke to you, we were preparing to bring our first new train into service, so achieving our commitment to deliver that before the year end. We now have thirty-four of those new trains in the UK of a full fleet of forty-six. Up to sixteen trains are regularly in customer service and this allows us to operate fifty percent of our timetable using the new units on Monday to Friday timetable. Our customers are experiencing the benefits and the improved journey quality they bring, and as a result, we're seeing metro customer satisfaction showing positive trends as well. The majority of our drivers are now trained on the new fleet and the program continues for the remainder of the team. I talked last December about how this commissioning and training phase will be the most challenging and that, given the bespoke design of the trains and our infrastructure, there will be a period of learning and adjustment. That has proved to be the case, but the trend since the introduction of the new fleet is positive in terms of reliability and less faults are consistently being experienced per kilometre operated. The new trains are experiencing less faults than the old ones already, which is a real positive. To support this, funding has, sorry, the introduction of the new fleet is the foundation for the next generation of the metro. We're preparing a new timetable to better align to customer needs, which will launch when the new fleet is in full operation. We're updating and improving our ticketing offer to include multimodal fare capping, ticketing on mobile and, as I mentioned, new ticket gates. Improved information channels via the POP app and a new website will combine to offer a product fit for a new generation. To support this, funding has been announced for the re-signalling of the metro system. Our existing safety critical system dates to the nineteen seventies and due to aging equipment, parts obsolescence and the dwindling availability of maintenance skills, the government has supported our request to commence Metro Go, a project to replace the signalling system over the next five years. Without the system, the future of the metro would be in doubt. The solid foundations of a new fleet and a new signalling system are critical, as on behalf of the Combined Authority, we prepare a business case for the extension of the metro to Washington. Moving on to buses, Nexus has this year carried nine million customer journeys since April twenty twenty-four and has been a vital lifeline for many as the commercial bus network has contracted in recent years. We've worked closely with our colleagues at the Combined Authority to make best use of central support to bolster services and reduce fares, particularly for young people. We're working closely with our colleagues at the authority to prepare a franchising scheme assessment, a first stage in assessing the case for reform of the bus industry. The Fishkeen Ferry continues to operate across the Tynan, carrying nearly half a million journeys each year. We'll shortly be starting work on the new North Shields ferry landing at the Fishkeen, which will secure the future of an iconic service which has been operating across the Tynan for over five hundred years. Whilst there is clearly much to be excited about in the transport space, Nexus continues to be challenged by some key issues. Along with other transport operators and public services, antisocial behaviour and societal tension continue to be issues. We want everyone to feel safe and welcome on our services and we work closely with our partners in the British Transport Police, Northumbria Police, the Police and Crime Commissioner's Office and the local authorities, engaging in multi-agency interventions. We're also working with partners, including here at the city council and the Combined Authority, to create a coordinated and effective plan to particularly ensure women and girls can feel safe in and around our transport services. And finally, as I reported last year, and similar to many of our local authority partners, our funding position remains difficult. The combined challenges of the last five years have resulted in a financial structural deficit of over five million pounds. Whilst we have a plan to maintain services in the short term, this is not sustainable over the medium and long term. To address the deficit, in addition to controlling costs and improving our agility and effectiveness, we have developed our first ever growth strategy. International benchmarking demonstrates Nexus as one of the lowest operational costs per train hour out of forty metros operating across the world, and we want to build on this with a continuous improvement focus and a commercial intent to maximise fare and non-fare revenue whilst increasing patronage. I hope this gives you an overview of where Nexus currently is and the opportunities and challenges we face. Thank you once again for having me today and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you, Cathy. Will you help me from you to call all the questions and then you can answer them all at the end? Great. Where am I? Right, no more than six questions will be allowed and there must be questions, must not be preceded by statements, okay? So first of all, I'll call on councillor Cookson. Can councillor Peters stand ready, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My thanks to Cathy for bringing this presentation here tonight. You mentioned the metro and the fleet that's rolling out. We're grateful to the team who are continuing to roll out the new trains and those who continue to maintain the old trains as they reach the end of their service. We've seen a few teething problems with the HVAC in the new trains over the summer. Can you outline your plans to deal with any similar challenges that might arise as the new trains have their first experience of a Geordie winter and what steps you are taking to ensure that the old trains will cope with the colder weather as they finally, as they enter their last year of service?
Thank you very much. Can councillor Stone stand ready, please? Councillor Peters?
Thank you so much. I wanted to ask what the process would be for securing free transport for patients visiting outpatient appointments at the Newcastle hospitals and also for relatives visiting patients in hospital as well.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Hartley please stand ready? Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Excuse me. Could I ask Cathy about her views on current driver availability, given there's been a number of reported problems with service levels at weekends owing to driver non-availability? a number of reported problems with service levels at weekends owing to driver non-availability? There are various views online about the causes of those, but if Cathy can give an official response on that, that'd be welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just let councillor know there were some names left off my sheet, so I'm going to call councillor Hartley, and then I'll call the three names on this side that I now know want to ask questions. Councillor Hartley, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Cathy. I was interested to hear from the Climate Change Forum yesterday about the projects Nexus are investing in to keep our travel infrastructure protected in a warming world. At a time when some are throwing their hands up at the so-called cost of net zero, would Nexus be up for sharing with the public the costs that climate inaction is having and the impact on transport budgets?
Thank you. Councillor Higgins, do you want to ask your question? Can councillor Irrom Ali please stand ready?
First of all, can I say thank you very much for that very comprehensive presentation, which was... A lot of it was about the metro. I'm a councillor in the West End of Newcastle, which is not particularly well-served by public transport. In fact, we don't have the metro, of course. Several years ago, Nexus actually developed a project, a transport project called Project Orpheus, which was about implementing a modern transport system, including modern trams into the West End. At the time, we couldn't afford the funding for it, but you've mentioned now funding available to the regional mayor to invest in transport, so I just wondered whether you're prepared to meet with me to discuss the feasibility of resurrecting Project Orpheus?
Okay. Thank you very much. Can councillor Herridge please stand ready? Councillor Ali?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Cathy, for your report. I wanted to ask you a question in relation to hate crime on public transport, and I'm keen to understand how staff are trained to support victims empathetically and ensure that reports are taken seriously and followed upon, even if the victim is hesitant to report directly to the police. I'm also interested to know what support is available for drivers who are the victims of or witnesses to hate crimes themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Herridge. Councillor Herridge?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to Cathy for this presentation. It was very useful. So residents in new builder estates across the city are often beholden to the private owners of those estates for the payment and commissioning of their public transport services. So I just wanted to know what more Nexus can do to make sure that residents in these estates can get to where they want to go and when they want to go there using public transport without having to rely on private owners making that decision for them.
Thank you very much. Yeah, well, sorry, Cathy, there were seven questions there by accident. If you can answer them, that'd be great. Thanks.
Sure, I'll take them in order. Firstly, councillor Cookson. Yes, as I mentioned, there undoubtedly has been a few teething problems with the new fleet, and we're working very closely with Stadler to work through solutions on all known issues. As we move into the winter, we set up well, well before the winter comes, as soon as we sort of get through spring, to be honest, we start creating a winter preparedness plan, and that looks at both old and new fleet. We build it up in partnership with Stadler, whereby we look at maintenance regimes, we look at additional resourcing requirements, and clearly as well, the new fleet has been tested extensively in Switzerland in the winter. So, you know, they have been put through their paces, as well as the technical testing that we have to do to hit all the standards that are required for a new fleet. So there is an awful lot of planning that goes into this. Last year, we actually had a pretty successful winter as we moved through it. We exceeded the targets we'd set ourselves, and that was because of the extensive planning by both Nexus operations and the Stadler team, and we've done that again this year, and we will continue to do that. We're really alive to the fact it's the last winter that we'll be nursing the old trains through, and so that is requiring a lot of work at the minute and a lot of preemptive work, actually. So we hope we're ready for that. Talking to the hospital visits for councillor Peters there, I mean, it is worth starting from a point that for anybody who themselves has a hospital appointment, they can travel for free before standard concessionary hours, both on metro and on bus, with confirmation of that card. I've already talked to the fact that there is, as a result of the Combined Authority's investment and the mayor's investment in capping all fares across the whole range, there is a lot of opportunity to travel at a more affordable price across all transport modes at the moment. That will benefit those attending hospital for outpatient appointments and those visiting hospitals. The concessionary ticket, the concessionary travel that allows the support is not only for those over the pensionable age, but of course, that's also for those with disabilities, and they too can take their carers for free. So there is quite a lot of opportunity already in there to support that, but by all means, please do get in touch with me if there's specific areas that you feel are disadvantaging people, and we can have a chat through with that. Driver availability, councillor Stone, we've had some challenges recently with spikes in sickness, and that is a mixture. It has been short-term and longer-term sickness, and we're working through that. I'm pleased to say the picture has significantly improved over recent weeks. It is something we continuously work with our colleagues on. I don't think, I mean, for any of you in large businesses at the minute, you'll know that there has been a significant uptake in uplifting sickness, and unfortunately, we're not immune to that. You know, the drivers have picked up some overtime recently, which has helped us no end, and we hope that as the driver training completes in the next month, that will help us further, because obviously, we're still juggling that transition process. So we hope that we'll be in a much better place over the coming weeks. The cost of net zero and climate change, climate inaction, when you were presenting the question, it is clearly a massive issue for us. It is absolutely a massive issue for us, and was highlighted just at the weekend with the Avanti, the Avanti incident. And interestingly, Network Rail had recently inspected that cutting, so it is a constant challenge, and it's something that we're investing an awful lot of time, money, technology and effort into. It's an incredibly difficult thing to cost, because for us, we almost badger it as a continuous improvement process as well, that this is not an elective thing, that we will choose to address or we won't. This is something that if we want to provide a consistent and reliable service, we have to evolve with. So to therefore put a price on both addressing it and not addressing it is actually quite difficult, because it's implicit in everything we do now. It's a question in every design we sign off. It's a question in every service solution that we implement, and that will only become more embedded. I mean, the Climate Change Forum yesterday, I saw the presentations, and they demonstrate just how embedded it is for us, but not just for us. You know, Stagecoach's presentation was excellent in demonstrating it isn't just an isolated part of your decision, it's part of your customer experience and the very ethos of the service you give. So, I mean, we'll always be willing to tell you what we're considering in that space, of course we will, and the risks of not doing it, we will always be transparent in that space. But to actually put a number against it, it will be quite a task for some time to come, I think. The West End, Project Orpheus, councillor Higgins. Yes, Project Orpheus dates to the early 2000s, I think, doesn't it? And it has been superseded by many studies, many strategies over the years. And I think that what I would say is absolutely, myself, or more pertinently now, the North East Combined Authority would welcome a conversation. It is included in the local transport plan, the delivery element of it, as a potential pipeline project, so the potential to look at that again and look at new solutions and new opportunities is most certainly referenced in the local transport plan and can be a feature of the emerging rail strategy that's also been worked on by the Combined Authority. So I think there's opportunities to discuss. Hate crime and support, it is a very specific area of crime, and it is something that we are really, really mindful of as a major employer. We invest an awful lot of time in training our frontline colleagues in all aspects of customer service and bystander training, and the ability to spot issues such as this and to address issues such as this is very much part of our customer service ethos and training and discussions. We want, as I said in my short summary, we want our network and our services to be available, accessible and safe for all, and I want everybody, no matter what, to feel that they are available to them. So it is extremely important for us and something that we do invest in. There are processes for drivers to report any form of abuse, and we, as an employer, will not tolerate any form of abuse irrespective of its source against our colleagues. And finally, regarding new builds, in specific to Newcastle but across the region, this is something that is a constant challenge, and I think one of the things that we are really keen to be involved in is early in the process, because the earlier we can be involved in even the spatial planning strategies, as well as the actual planning processes, the earlier we can be involved in this, this isn't a retrofit then, and you are really thinking about the needs of large-scale housing developments well before they're coming on stream. Actually, I would say a really live and positive example in Newcastle is the work we're doing up at Callerton, and even thinking about level crossings and things like that, because it's not only public transport, it's active travel, it's connectivity, and to think across the piece, we need to be involved at the beginning, and we're really, really willing to do that. We've got a department that are ready and able to have those discussions and to be there at the planning phase with the private developers to say this is what people need to have sustainable travel choices.
Okay, thank you, Cathy, especially for bringing it in on time. That's good. Thank you for a very interesting presentation, and on behalf of council, can I thank you for joining us tonight? We now move on to item eight, the Youth Justice Board Annual Report. I'll now invite councillor Storey to present the Youth Justice Board Annual Report, to be seconded by councillor Means.
Lord Mayor, council, it's with great pleasure that I bring to council the Youth Justice Partnership Report. It's a statutory obligation that council signs this off, and I always look forward to bringing this to council. Given children and young people, the best start in life is a goal that defines our city's future. It means standing up for fairness and opportunity so that no child misses out because of the circumstances that are out of their control. It also means being unwavering in our commitment to all children, especially those facing the most complex challenges, and we want every child in Newcastle to feel happy, healthy, safe, ready for the next steps in life and to be heard. Putting our young residents first is at the heart of the Youth Justice Service, and the staff work relentlessly to give every child a chance to succeed no matter what the circumstances. Children and young people make up nearly a quarter of our city's population, with over 72,000 19-year-olds in Newcastle, and 38% of those children are living in poverty. So this council carries an enormous burden and responsibility to support as many young people as possible facing significant and complex barriers. The Youth Justice Service plays a vital role in helping to keep children safe, families safe and communities safe. They continue to deliver the near impossible, building trust and helping young people navigate the most difficult situations, and this requires immense skill, compassion and resilience to do this, and I want to thank the staff and all of the partners for their dedication in this. I think this year's strategic plan shows the impact of the work and the challenges ahead. Custody rates remain low, and the number of children with custodial sentences has fallen again, and that's a clear sign that our approach is effective. Nationally, the number of children in custody has at its lowest on record, and whilst our rate has slightly risen, we continue to perform better than the wider North East region. However, we acknowledge that the reoffending rate has increased, and it now sits above the England and Wales average. This is a trend that we believe is partly linked to post-COVID period and the complexity of young people that we are now working with. To tackle these challenges head-on, we've kept prevention and diversion at the heart of the strategy, and the introduction of the new Youth Justice Board Key Performance Indicators will give us sharper insight into performance, helping us target what works. And we know that the targeted interventions can deliver results. Our focus deterrent approach has already contributed to a 12% reduction in violence against the person offences committed by children in our city. We've also seen real progress in prevention. Out-of-court and diversion work now accounts for 72% of the service's caseload, and what that means in real terms is that more children are being supported earlier before they reach crisis point. Our Turning Point Programme supported 141 children last year, and we've secured funding to contribute to continue this work in 2025-26. Last November, His Majesty's Inspector of Probation recognised our many strengths, including our participation work with children and families, our use of innovation approaches like music therapy. Where the inspection identified areas for improvement, we've acted quickly and decisively. We've strengthened staff training and supervision. We've introduced a new case recording system and a more rigorous quality assurance framework. We've expanded our offer, bringing in-house CBT, launching a dedicated risk outside-the-home team and developing a multi-agency graded response tool to support early intervention. And we've also created a new victim support policy and improving how we engage victims in a restorative process, something that's very close to my heart. And we've continued our focus on school attendance and send with targeted interventions and a newly appointed youth justice education worker. The service is delivering on our duty to ensure that every child in Newcastle can grow up safe and supported and included. We are working across services from early help and education to social care to remove barriers and create opportunities, with championing fairness, inclusion and ambition for every child. This report and strategic plan reflects our commitment to listen and to learn and to act to improve the quality of life for our children, supporting them to become successful adults. So today, I ask members to support the continued development of this vital service by approving the plan and reaffirming that our belief that no child is beyond support, and every child in Newcastle deserves a bright future. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Storey. Be seconded by councillor Means. Yep, you can do it. Yep, fine. Great. And that has come to our first speaker, councillor Christine Morrissey, please. Oh, sorry. Yes?
Councillor Morrissey? Thank you. Thank you, councillor Storey, and thanks to all of the dedicated staff who have contributed to that. I think we do owe them a vote of thanks because they do work with some of our most difficult children and parents. But as corporate parents, we all have a duty to ensure children in our care have access to the support and services they require to lead happy and fulfilling lives. And sadly, we have had a slight rise in children who are care- And sadly, we have had a slight rise in children who are care experienced, being taken into the youth justice service. We are, as councillor Storey said, slightly higher than we were last year and we are higher than our statistical neighbours. So my question is, what specific interventions are being done with our care experienced children to prevent them from entering the youth justice system? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Ferguson stand ready? Councillor Higgins, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a past member of the board of the youth justice service, I'm delighted to acknowledge the excellent work of the youth justice team and I'm particularly pleased to see the reduction in the number of young people either being reminded into police custody or receiving custodial sentences. It was one of my constant concerns that many magistrates failed to recognise the damaging impact of custody on vulnerable young people and something that could set them on the road to a lifetime of criminal behaviour. Therefore, the figures shown in this report are a credit to the work of everyone concerned to get these numbers down. But the second part of my, the comments I would like to make, Lord Mayor, are very much from a personal level, because I want to mention the name of Jenny Hutchison. Jenny was a member of the youth justice team who sadly passed away a few months ago whilst out walking with friends, which was something that she dearly loved to do. I first met Jenny myself as a member of the housing relocation team in Scotswood at a difficult time when many, when many families were losing their homes and her compassion and support for those families was an example to us all. She then moved on to work in the probation service and more recently the youth justice team and we became very dear friends. Jenny was an outstanding person in so many ways and her loss came as a blow to so many. She will be sadly missed. I just want to extend my thanks to Cath and Jen and everyone in the youth justice team for the tremendous support they provided for Jenny's family at such a difficult time. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Higgins for that tribute. Councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you councillor Higgins for your words there as well. I want to place on record my thanks to the staff and the partners who have contributed to the completion and ultimately the implementation of this plan. As noted by the previous speakers, it's incredibly important work on behalf of the young people of our city and so we absolutely should welcome it. Work obviously not without its own challenges, including some of the trends that have been alluded to both by councillor Storey and by councillor Morrissey. And so we look forward, I think, in future years to hearing how those trends have been tackled. I also want to place on record my thanks to the officers who came along to scrutiny to discuss this item back in, I think it was September. I think it was a very useful discussion at that committee where there were a number of topics discussed and I wanted to pick up on one in particular. There was an acknowledgement in the meeting that whilst there is, where there has been an increase in drug related crime amongst young women, it is still disproportionately the young men in the city who are represented within the statistics around about 78% male, according to one figure. And I think it is of vital concern to us that young men in the city remain overrepresented in the figures that we see in reports like this. We have to understand why that is and we absolutely must address it. I think it's obviously incredibly important to acknowledge the intersection of a range of characteristics. Yes, there are, you know, all sorts of multifaceted issues, not just gender, but ultimately we say, you know, no young person is born to be bad. And I absolutely agree with councillor Storey that every child deserves a bright future. So I would be interested just to explore a little bit more and to hear more about how we are planning to tackle the overrepresentation of young men in some of these statistics and in the early intervention work that we undertake. I would note for what it's worth on that point that there is some good work clearly being done in terms of setting up specific groups for young women and young men, but I would be interested in some further information on that. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Maynes, you reserve the right to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you to everybody who's been involved in this service, from the staff, the board, the many partners and of course the volunteers. My career involved working with young people, many who led chaotic and often very dangerous lives and who are often drawn into or exploited into criminal activity. This report highlights to me that with the right committed team of people around the child, the family and their environment, that great progress can be achieved. The programmes and initiatives highlighted in the report are evidence of this, as well as the challenges the service faces. But I think the main thing that strikes me about this report is that not only are the staff and volunteers well trained, experienced and knowledgeable, but they also share very strong values and principles that keep young people central to everything they do. I really liked the quote at the start, nothing without me about me. That's core to their work and that's crucial. Thank you again, everybody in the service for your belief and commitment and to people on the corporate parenting group who oversee all of this work. It is a difficult job, but one which when it works, works not only for the child, but for families, their communities and society. I second this report, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thanks Paula. Councillor Storey, you have the right to reply to the debate.
Just very briefly, just to acknowledge the questions that have been raised and I will respond with more detail to both councillor Morrissey and councillor Ferguson. And thank you very much for your warm encouragement around the work of the staff and the partners. And I'd also just like to place on record thanks to councillor Higgins. I think that was a very moving, sorry, it's a very moving recognition of the staff and I think it just, it just shows what that service has been through as well, over the last few months and year, to lose somebody like that. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Does council agree to the recommendations in the report? Thank you. Item nine, the governance report on scrutiny arrangements. I'll now invite councillor Ellis to present the governance report to be seconded by councillor Phillips.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As colleagues in the chamber will be well aware, this report has come to council tonight as part of our governance review, a long and painstaking process in which all members were invited to take part. Utilising independent expertise and local experience, it has been a thoroughly meticulous process. The work carried out by our scrutiny committees is commendable and it is to the council's credit that we do value scrutiny to such a high regard. Effective scrutiny helps secure the effective, efficient delivery of public services and drives improvements within the authority itself. As such, we also saw the need to scrutinise scrutiny itself, revise and renew our scrutiny arrangements and to ensure that they will provide effective scrutiny, reflect best practice and best value and will continue to do so in our changing world. The structure we're recommending is clear and allows for each committee to explore best ways of working within their remit, to prioritise work programmes and interrogate items of interest further through task and finish groups and spotlight sessions. These improvements can easily be delivered without additional cost and without straining resources, allowing committees to focus on what works best for them to give outstanding scrutiny within their remit. Corporate scrutiny committee, the new senior committee, would give management and oversight, rightly focusing on finance and budget monitoring. Health and social care scrutiny committee will have better opportunity to scrutinise health and social care in greater depth as items specific to children are moved into a specialised committee. Children, families and communities scrutiny committee, a fresh committee that takes aspects so important to families into one specialised committee rather than them being spread between committees. Place scrutiny committee would be a new committee grouping place based concerns that tend to imply heavily on each other. All aspects of current scrutiny are included. The difference from the current system is that they're better grouped for excellent scrutiny to be delivered by members with interest in those areas. We are going farther than that though and are strengthening our approach and this is all set out in the report. Naturally, for these committees to work to their best, there would be a quarterly coming together of chairs, vice chairs and other key persons, director and cabinet member responsible for governance to provide advice and guidance. This will be covered by the scrutiny governance group. The members of this group will already be invested in making sure our scrutiny system has support to work to its best. As an informal committee, it does not give special responsibility allowances to any of its members. It rightly does not call further on the public purse or strain resources. It's not a complex concept. I do find it to be common sense. Lastly, and importantly, I wholeheartedly thank everyone involved in the painstaking process that has gone into producing this report and I recommend it to be accepted by the council as is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I call on councillor Phillips in a second, please? He's over the right, okay, thank you very much. There is an amendment. Can I call on councillor Mark Mitchell to move the amendment to the report to be seconded by councillor Ferguson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to echo the words of the proposer and to thank Constitutional Committee for their hard work on this report. I know that a lot of people put a lot of effort into this and the measures around children, families and communities in place are to be welcomed and will improve our scrutiny. However, while a lot of consideration was also given to the current work of scrutiny overview and a finance and budget review, I simply do not believe that the outcomes reflect the best way to ensure that our finances, our budget, our medium term financial plan, as well as other corporate matters are properly scrutinised. As matters stand now in the proposal, corporate scrutiny will deal with finance along with seven other areas and budget and the medium term financial plan are not even mentioned. This is in a context where council finances are under the microscope and where people outside this chamber are asking about council finances on a regular basis. As well as the fact that finance will be one of eight areas covered by corporate scrutiny, this means that rather than finance being scrutinised by members of council who are actually interested in finance, finance will become a sideshow in a committee that could have other focuses. Council, we are all aware of what is going on outside this chamber. We all have views on who might be best placed to run this council and the offering they will be making to the public in May. But do we really want to end up if this council is in the same position as Kent or Durham, where there is literally no formal way for councillors to scrutinise the council's finances? It is therefore essential that we set up now and continue a clear and robust process that is focused on finance, the budget, on the medium term financial plan and that is set up so that councillors who are interested in those topics can be fully involved and more importantly, so the public can see who is looking out for council taxpayers' money. I'll now turn to the informal scrutiny governance group. One of my key tests since becoming a councillor of anything this council does is can I explain this to a voter? This informal group does not pass that test. In addition, importantly, it excludes the Greens, all the independents and indeed our one Tory member will not, no input into the body that is meant to be setting scrutiny's direction. This is a chimera of a committee which again could be wide open to abuse depending on who is running the council and forming the opposition after May. So we have gone back to basics on this. We know we need a scrutiny committee for children and families. We know we need to move to a place committee, but those changes should not result in a downgrading of financial scrutiny. They should not muddy the water on overview of scrutiny and scrutiny must and should be properly resourced. I am therefore moving the amendment, which we believe would result in a better scrutiny structure than we have now, without fudges and with clear lines of responsibility. I am well aware that a committee of 15 might not be ideal, but I would rather a committee on which parties other than the Liberal Democrats and Labour have a voice is more important than the fudge. We were informed that this matter must be referred to Constitutional Committee for further consideration and we have therefore proposed it. We know that this will extend the timetable somewhat, which is not ideal, but this is an area where it is better to get things right than to rush and to get them wrong.
Thank you very much. Councillor Ferguson, the second? Right, okay, thank you very much. Could I call on councillor Powers, please? And can councillor Hartley, please stand ready?
Lord Mayor, it's disappointing that we find ourselves debating this amendment tonight. After months of cross party engagement, detailed work by officers and good faith discussions through Constitutional Committee, the Liberal Democrats have chosen at the 11th hour to throw a spanner in the works. This amendment wasn't discussed at the committee, that has led the review on this from the start. The Liberal Democrats chose to sit in silence on this issue. Officers have confirmed it's entirely new. As such, if passed, it couldn't even take effect tonight. It would have to be referred back for further consideration, delaying the whole process yet again. That means more time, more cost, more confusion, all for something that could and should have been raised earlier. For the record, a discussion I took part in at the finance and budget scrutiny committee was comfortable with the options being put forward. No objections were raised by ordinary members. Everyone understood the direction, the reasoning behind the proposals and was confident of good financial scrutiny would continue within the new arrangements. So members should rightly ask, why are these amendments being brought forward now and at this stage? And let's be honest, they tried to sneak this in. Their first draft of this motion was an attempt to force this through without scrutiny. When told they would have to go back to Constitutional Committee because they hadn't raised it there, they panicked and hurriedly redrafted it. That's not how good governance works. Let's be clear about what these, what this amendment actually does.
What's the, what's the point?
Lord Mayor, I believe that councillor Powers is referring to confidential discussions that were had with myself and councillor Mitchell and the monitoring officer about how to ensure that the wording of that amendment was appropriate. So if you would like to clarify how exactly he was aware of those confidential conversations or indeed retract this statement, either I'd be happy with.
Okay, it wasn't a point of order, sorry councillor Ferguson, but you made your point. Come on then.
Something's rattled them.
This is a point of personal information, councillor Powers made a factually incorrect statement about me. I clearly made in finance committee when I was there, my objection to this. So he, he has just misstated what I said.
Yes, point of personal information only relates to if you say something earlier in this meeting and you are later misquoted by someone else. That's what it relates. Does it relate to anything that may have happened outside of this meeting?
Councillor Powers? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just to clarify, I did explicitly call out ordinary members. Plenty of people in this room seemingly heard that when they tried to... Plenty of people in this room seemingly heard that when they tried to correct councillor Mitchell there. Let's get back to it. Where was I, of two? Sorry, Lord Mayor, I've lost my place. Okay, so let's be clear about what this amendment actually does. It increases the number of special responsibility allowances. At a time when every penny of public money is under scrutiny, when the council's finances are stretched and residents feel a real cost of living crisis, this is not a good look. It's not responsible governance, it's political self-interest. To put it bluntly, it looks like creating jobs for the boys. It's increasing the number of special... It's nothing to do with scrutiny or with strengthening governance. It's everything to do with political convenience and protecting their own. Let's be clear on the process. Despite some confusion and perhaps deliberate misdirection from some members in the chamber, the governance review has never been a Labour process, nor has ever been our recommendations. It was led by an independent organisation. All members, every single member in this room, was encouraged to take part and engage. Many chose not to bother to do so. Independent recommendations were then made and discussed in a proper route, the Constitutional Committee. And like every group, there were areas that we supported and areas we disagreed with, but we engaged constructively and in good faith. We've worked for months across parties to get the review right. Officers and members alike have acted professionally, constructively and collaboratively. This is a last-minute grandstanding undermines that work and disrespects those who've taken the process seriously. Our residents expect better from us. They expect integrity, consistency, and a focus on serving this city, not serving ourselves. So I urge colleagues, let's reject this amendment, let's finish this review as was intended, and on a fair, transparent and collaborative terms, we all agreed. Let's show that Newcastle City Council puts good governance above little games.
Thank you very much. Can councillor Walker please stand ready, councillor Hartley?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Crikey, I think those last few minutes has shown that we need to really slow down and ask some questions about this whole process. And look, I realise that as the Green group, we only elected our third Green recently, and so because of that, I've had very few meetings of experience of scrutiny committee. But that means we do bring some fresh eyes, so I hope I can raise some important questions here. Look, I've found overview and scrutiny committee to be really positive experience. The question is, how do we make it work better? Clearly, there is a need to work to improve the timings of the meetings, and I welcome the acknowledgement of that in the report. What is most important is that we have confirmations of any changes to the times of committees as soon as possible, so that councillors can manage their attendance around their day jobs. I hope this is all part of modernising the way we do business. There could be some really helpful work here around improving representation for councillors from working-class backgrounds, though I appreciate the timing of scrutiny committees is just the tip of a mighty iceberg on this. Look, I share the concerns raised in the opposition amendment about the confusion that an informal scrutiny governance group could cause. I'd also like to draw the attention to the council to further confusion. The informal scrutiny governance group referred to in Appendix A is not included in the governance report. I'm really not sure what that's about. That said, the Green group has reservations about such informal groups. Without setting clear boundaries and having clarity on the function and purpose, they risk either becoming a talking shop or have undue influence, which are harder to hold to account. At a time when the council is in overall control, there's a greater risk of this occurring, and so formalising discussions and agreements in those arenas where people are working cross-party is an essential part of ensuring we are doing open, transparent business that can be scrutinised by residents. As a Green group, we would have preferred that if there is a scrutiny governance group, it is both formal and politically balanced. As this is not being proposed, please can councillor Ellis or councillor Phillips and set out how communication will be shared about the agenda and outcome of these meetings, whether minutes will be kept and whether councillors not on the governance group and residents will be able to observe these meetings as they would other scrutiny groups. I think it's important we hear the Labour group's thinking on this issue, although I do believe the opposition amendments makes these changes clearer, more transparent, and fit for times when the council is in overall control.
Thank you very much. Councillor Walker, please.
Lord Mayor, I'm disappointed to have to speak on this item. Scrutiny belongs quite rightly to the back benches, but the Liberal Democrat amendment has left me, quite frankly, incensed. Seventy minutes before this meeting began, councillors received the amendment. Seventy minutes. That is not scrutiny, that is not transparency, and it is certainly not how serious decisions should be made about the governance of this council. The Constitutional Committee spent months undertaking open and constructive cross-party work on this review. Every councillor had the opportunity to contribute. Every councillor had the space to challenge, to shape and to question the proposals. Yet now, at the final stage, the Liberal Democrats have submitted an amendment that would increase the number of special responsibility allowances. And let us be honest about why. This amendment has not been brought forward to improve governance. This amendment has been brought forward to spare embarrassment within their own group. It protects their own interests and nothing more. We all recall their words when they accused others of adding to the public purse for political purposes. They said it was wrong, they said it sent the wrong message, they said it was a matter of principle. Yet here they are, attempting to increase allowances to protect one of their own. The hypocrisy is glaring. And to make matters worse, this amendment has not been through the Constitutional Committee. A final decision cannot be made tonight. It must now be referred back, creating an entirely unnecessary delay to a process that has already taken months. This is not serious governance, and it does not serve this city. I urge colleagues to reject this amendment and allow the governance review to proceed as intended. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Ferguson, you reserve the right to speak on seconding the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We started well, we haven't necessarily continued it. Yes, these proposals have been debated at length, and they are being debated here again tonight. I'm amazed that the members opposite don't recognise that as what it is, which is the representation of a profound disagreement that exists between our group and you about the importance of scrutiny and the criticality of key thematic focuses, particularly finance. This isn't a party political point, but rather a fundamental point about how scrutiny contributes to good governance. Effective scrutiny requires appropriate thematic structures, and it has been apparent to me throughout this exercise that we have been attempting to put a quart in a pint pot. It's always been our preferred option to retain finance scrutiny, but we were engaging with cross-party conversations, just like councillor Powers asked, throughout this entire process. The proposals that we have in front of us tonight cross a red line for the Liberal Democrats, and so we feel compelled to make an alternative case here. It is absolutely within our gift to make these specific proposals cost-neutral, if that's what Labour's worried about. But isn't accountability as a principle fundamentally important? And haven't we made those savings already by deleting Standards Committee and getting rid of Climate Change Committee? If we put a fifth scrutiny committee in, the overall changes remain cost-positive for the council. If councillor Walker is worried about the notice that he received of the amendment, which is entirely in accordance with amendments for any report or any motion, you are welcome to bring proposals to change the charter as part of a governance review, of course. The only grandstanding in politicking sadly that we have had here tonight has come from councillor Powers, who doesn't sit on Constitutional Committee, hasn't heard anything that anybody has had to say about any of this, and seems entirely surprised because he hasn't heard the repeated things that I've said about the importance of finance scrutiny, about the importance of ensuring that good scrutiny happens across all of council's business. In circumstances of no overall control, driving consensus on the big policy decisions is more vital than ever. Scrutiny does that. With financial pressures from the Labour government forcing continuing difficult decisions on local authorities about what services to provide, which to cut, interrogating financial realities is increasingly important. Scrutiny delivers that. Improving the quality of decision-making, scrutiny delivers that. Aiding members' understanding of big-picture challenges, scrutiny delivers that. Holding external partners to account, scrutiny delivers that. Providing a check and balance on executive power, scrutiny delivers that. Providing accountability to the public, scrutiny delivers that. This is a point of principle, not of politics. The amendment should be passed unanimously.
Councillor Phillips, and you reserve the right to speak?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, I've listened with great interest to the debate, and sadly to say, the consensus that we used to reach in Constitutional Committee seems to have disappeared at the 11th hour. Nevertheless, turning my attention to the report, I wish to second the report from Constitutional Committee to City Council tonight, which, as councillor Ellis has pointed out, is a result of a meticulous and painstaking process which began last year following a review of our governance arrangements by CFGS. As has been mentioned, all councillors were invited by CFGS to feed into the review through a variety of methods, including a survey which over-looked the members. And it is interesting to note that during that survey, a number of members who responded to it felt, in relation to scrutiny, that too many scrutiny committees diluted effectiveness and overloaded agendas reduced focus. Effective scrutiny is a highly valued part of our democratic process, often acting in a critical but constructive manner and can help drive improvements within the local authority to deliver efficient and effective public services. The report before council tonight seeks to recognise members' concerns and act upon the suggestions from CFGS to ensure our governance arrangements are those of a modern organisation with a democratic process that enables effective and efficient decision-making and participation, and can be delivered within existing resources. Councillor Ellis has touched upon the remit of each committee, so I will not expound further, other than to say I am delighted to see that the proposed corporate scrutiny committee would take on the council's function with regard to climate change, ensuring that it would be embedded across the whole of City Council. Lord Mayor, I believe the proposed arrangements of our scrutiny function and opportunity become more effective and forward-looking, with more pre-scrutiny taking place, looking at the forward-plan process and the local plan, and helping to deliver for the people of our great city. Much has been mentioned about the amendment, and personally, I have to say, I am disappointed that this has come at the 11th hour. I would point out that all suggestions up to now have been the subject of rigorous interrogation and consideration by members of Constitutional Committee, working in a non-parasite manner. For changes to be presented to council at this late stage, including suggestions that have already been through the full process of the review, discussed at Constitutional Committee and decided against, is disappointing to say the least. The amendment proposes to add a fifth scrutiny committee contrary to the views of the elected members who participated in the survey by CFGS. It will increase costs through the additional SRAs...
Please shut up.
...and resources required for the support of the additional committee and extra meetings. This at a time when resources are limited. I do note a suggestion from...
Can you sort, please?
I do note a suggestion from beyond, from over the other side of the chamber, and perhaps Finance Committee could look into the increased costs of the proposal from the Liberal Democrats, as requested in their amendment to support the new committee.
I'll have to ask you to finish now, councillor Phillips.
Can I again express my thanks to CFGS for their hard work, expertise and knowledge to elected members and officers which have enabled this report to be brought before council tonight? I second the report and would urge members to reject the amendment.
Thank you. And council, I'll decide when it's time. Thank you very much. I try and give a bit of leeway to people to finish what they're saying, and I do it to all sides. So councillor Ellis, would you like your right of reply, please?
I sit on health and social care scrutiny, and it's admirably chaired by councillor Taylor. We've done many different things in that, not in the public gaze. We've had task and finish groups, we've had site visits, we have pre-meetings. To have excellent scrutiny, not all of it is within the public gaze. It's good to look at different ways to bring that excellence to play. All committees, of course, will be open to the public. I am disappointed about what's happened here, because I'm so excited about what we can do with scrutiny. We've not made this decision on a whim. There's no downgrading, there's no fudge. We're actually elevating finance to the main committee. The only thing that is rushed appears to be this amendment. We respect the valuable place scrutiny has for the people of our city. The report presented tonight has been the result of a process spanning nearly two years, involving the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny, individual members and officers, political groups and scrutiny committee members. We've assessed best practice from elsewhere and looked at what works best for our council and the people of Newcastle, and we've examined that within Constitutional Committee to come to the recommendation that we have tonight. My wholehearted thanks goes to everyone involved for the extraordinary hard work that's gone into producing this report, in particular the officers who've responded to requests from Constitutional with grace and diligence. So I thoroughly recommend this report to council and ask you to agree the recommendations as set out in the report.
Thank you very much. Is the amendment to the report agreed?
Yes.
Okay, I think we need a vote then. Linda? As usual, if you can all vote electronically, and if you can't manage to do that, I'll ask for a show of hands. So everybody who is able to vote electronically, done that? Right, can I ask for a show of hands of those of you who didn't vote electronically, who are in favour of the amendment, please show? Sorry? Okay, got that? Those who... Right, put your hands down now, thanks. Those who didn't manage to vote electronically and are against the amendment, can you please show? Sorry, put your hands down now, thank you. Any abstentions? Okay, any abstentions? Nope? Okay, there are 28 in favour of the motion and 35 against, sorry, the amendment, 35 against. So does council agree to the recommendations in the report?
No.
No, need another vote? Okay. Linda? Okay, I'll now ask those of you... Oh, still going. Those of you who couldn't vote electronically, who are in favour of the report, please show. Okay, thank you. Those of you who are against, please show. And, thank you. Anyone abstaining? Nope? Okay, so that was 35 for and 28 against. Thank you very much. We now move on to questions by members. Three questions, while for all a reply, were published on the agenda and are deemed to have been put under Standing Order 9 of the Council Procedure Rules. Fifteen minutes is allocated, so then written responses will be provided if the time runs out. Question one, the first question is from councillor Kane to councillor Kilgore regarding the council's performance. Can I invite councillor Kilgore to respond to the question, please? Yes, councillor Kilgore.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The Local Government Association guidance is clear that it is the responsibility of everyone in the council to enhance a local authority's performance, and though councillors and officers have different roles to play in performance management, effective partnership working is important in creating effective performance management processes and culture. Councillors are responsible for setting the overall vision, strategic priorities and policy framework for the council, whilst officers are responsible for ensuring that day-to-day delivery of services implements council policies and delivers on strategic goals set by councillors. Full council is responsible for adopting and implementing its budget and policy framework, including setting the budget, council tax and major strategies. The leader and cabinet members are responsible for service areas in their designated portfolio areas. They work closely with corporate leaders in their service areas. Scrutiny members are responsible for contributing to the development of strategy within service areas across the council, holding political and corporate decision-makers to account and scrutinising issues relevant to delivery of the council's services and delivery itself. The chief executive leads the planning, delivery and evaluation of their corporate leadership team, directorate management teams and operational teams, and is responsible for the delivery of council services, following the direction of decision-making councillors, sorry, following the direction of decision-making councillors, and ensuring that action is taken to deal with areas of performance that require improvement, manage risk and develop areas of good practice. This council has a structured approach to performance management that supports our budget and policy framework. Our directorate business plans detail key actions and performance indicators that are used by leadership teams to monitor progress and impact. Quarterly performance reporting details delivery across service areas, and annual performance reporting sets out the impact that our delivery is making in the context of the strategic priorities set by council.
Okay, thank you very much. Do you have a supplementary, councillor?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Does councillor Kilgore agree with me that it is inappropriate, when council performance comes under intense scrutiny in this chamber, for members opposite to pop up, and last month it was councillor Barry Stanners, it's been others, and claim it is some sort of attacking officers? Will she put an end to these attempts to deflect the blame onto officers and take responsibility for her administration shortcomings? Thank you.
Councillor Kilgore?
I think it's very clear, when we're standing in this chamber, when there are very personal, sometimes attacks from the opposition, when there is criticism about performance, that much of that criticism is directed at our offices, and I will not, I will not, I will not allow that to happen, nor will I in any, Greg, if I'm going to be asked a question, I'd like to be able to answer without you chuntering in the background and interrupting me. I am more than satisfied that members of the Labour group who have stood up and who have defended the hard work and the good work of our officers are acting in the best interests of both our staff team and the council as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Higgins has asked for a supplementary?
Yes, thanks very much, Lord Mayor. It's just a brief question about key areas of council policy. Councillor Kilgore has outlined who is responsible for performance in her response to councillor Kane's question. Could she please expand on how she is assured about council performance in key areas of service delivery across the council? Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you for that question. There are multiple ways the council manages performance. As an organisation, we're highly regulated and our statutory services are regularly inspected. Ofsted rated our children's services as good, and inspection of adult services like care at home, reablement and our registered services for personal and nursing care are also registered good. Our statutory reporting to government is rigorous and closely monitored. We work with government to set benchmarks and targets across our service areas and account for our performance. Only this week we'll be submitting our quarterly monitoring report to government for the Better Care Fund, for example. We report to cabinet on our budget quarterly, and of course we produce statutory budget and financial reports to government, and we've brought our budgets in on target, no mean feat. Every directorate completes quarterly performance reporting, which they accounted for in our annual assurance processes, feeding into our annual governance statement. This gets externally audited, and we've never received any concerns from auditors on performance management. We don't just rely on reports. My cabinet have constant oversight of performance in their portfolios through regular meetings with their service leads. This is an important part of our performance management because it gives the opportunity to drill down into issues, better understand our performance trends and make the improvements we need for residents. I hope that gives some assurance about the external and internal oversight of performance across the council and demonstrates just how seriously we do take it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kilgore. Question two is from councillor Mark Mitchell to councillor Frew regarding financial transparency on weed killing and city beautification. Can I invite councillor Frew to respond to the question, please?
Yes.
Oh, okay, short and sweet.
I suspect we'll get the real question now.
Well done. It's the rules of the council that supplemental is allowed, councillor Mitchell?
So, since councillor Frew apparently believes in the councillor Kilgore way of answering questions, can he now explain why, when 1.7 million was found for weed killing and city beautification, where it came from? And if he still wishes to defend the decision to close the city library early, to continue to charge pensions for new wheelie bins, to continue to fail to prepare payments for residents?
Yeah, thank you. Councillor Frew?
Well, I heard multiple questions in there. I'll just take the first because that's the relevant one to what we've started on. Because I gave a one-word response because I literally didn't know what the point of the question was. I did not understand what councillor Mitchell's concerns here were. The funds for this are a one-off item from the One of Income Reserve. This is money that was not budgeted, not planned for. We had a windfall, and I would have thought this would be a question that councillor Mitchell could bring up through scrutiny, as he's so keen on it, rather than waste our time in here.
Quiet, please. Councillor Frew?
I think it is very good that we have been able to secure additional funds for the betterment of our city, and I'm unclear what the deep concern here is.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Herridge is asked to make a supplementary?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Could councillor Frew please expand on the other work that's being done across the city on cleaning our streets, thanks to local investment, particularly around the chewing gum machine?
The chewing gum machine! I think it's worth saying that we have been under deep financial pressures in this council for a long time, and councillor Ferguson was trying to say about how, oh, terrible the new Labour government is. We're already projecting to be five million pounds a year better off, and that's before we even got to properly lobby around the adult social care funding and the transport funding formulas, which we think need significant improvements. But we have worked very hard to provide funds for improving the city. You will see how good that Northumberland Street is looking. I finally got to see it without all of the digging. It's a significant improvement on what it used to look like, and the chewing gum machine has been fantastic improvement to our streets. But every time that there is some improvement, that there is something good, we've heard the Liberal Democrats cry about how bad the city looks and how terrible things are and doing down the city, then something good comes along and they say, but not that, we didn't want that, how terrible of Labour to spend some money and find it to do something good.
Thank you very much. Move on to the next question, question three, which is from councillor Byrne to councillor Hay regarding planned uses for council-owned land by Newcastle United Football Club. Can I invite councillor Hay to respond to the question, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As a portfolio holder with responsibility for both planning and parks and green spaces, I will be responding to this question. I'm absolutely committed to a policy of transparency with members of council and residents about all aspects of the council's business. It's under this administration that an independent review into governance and assurance has taken place, with transparency, scrutiny and clarity around decision-making at its heart. I understand why questions like this are raised, but it is important to recognise that some aspects of the council's work must remain commercially confidential, that it's not about secrets or secrecy, but about good governance. Every local authority deals with matters that involve potential investment, land or partnership working, and those discussions often carry commercial or legal sensitivities. Being mindful of those protects the council's position, prevents the creation of liability and safeguards the public interest. Any conversations that take place will be handled by officers at the appropriate level, in line with our established procedures and professional standards. All decisions will continue to be made within the council's policy and budget framework with the Nolan Principles and our shared commitment to openness and democratic accountability.
Thank you very much. Councillor Byrne, do you have a supplemental?
Yes, so just to clarify, I've understood correctly that councillor Hay is saying that the council is transparent but is refusing to say whether they've had any discussions with the club about the potential use of Lasers Park or elsewhere, in which case my supplemental question is, would the council be willing to tell us anything about the over 30,000 emails that have been, that have been sent between senior council officers and councillors and the club over a seven-year period? Which I think is a matter of reasonable interest. I mean, that's an enormous amount of council time that has been spent on emails with the keywords of Newcastle United Football Club and Lasers Park, and either legal agreement or leasehold or sale. So councillor Hay has mentioned the importance of protecting the council's finances, given the enormous investment of time that this represents. Is councillor Hay willing to explain why that was considered justifiable and to explain what that was about?
Councillor Hay?
What I will say is that Newcastle United is a major stakeholder in this city. Residents care about the football club, the council cares about the football club, but I'm not going to comment on rumour or hypotheticals.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, council. That's the end of oral questions. The responses to the two written questions submitted are included in the supplemental agenda which is published on the council's website. We now come on to item 11, Cabinet Statement. Can I call upon councillor Kilgore to present the report, please? Is that somebody's, oh, councillor Haver? Thank you. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is only our second cabinet statement to council, and as I said last month, this will be an iterative process as we navigate this new way of working. The updates in this statement are by no means exhaustive, but they give council the opportunity to discuss a wide range of key activities in multiple cabinet areas. I want cabinet statements to show not only our achievements but also our challenges, and to highlight any changes on the horizon that could affect our council and our city. So, we've seen our city once again demonstrate its prowess at holding prestigious, internationally acclaimed events, as we hosted the fantastic Mercury Prize and shone the spotlight on our ever-growing music scene. After the MOBOs, a state-of-the-art recording studio coming to the quayside and incredible week-long Mercury Fringe programme, our activity is developing a legacy for homegrown talent across the arts, we're making sure Newcastle has the facilities, infrastructure and opportunities for people to achieve their dreams without needing to leave the North East and to inspire new generations. We've also announced our Christmas and New Year celebrations, including a new Huaime Manae celebration to rival the famous events in cities like Edinburgh. Cultural events are vital to our local economy, driving tourism, boosting our businesses and creating jobs for our residents. They also bring joy and creativity to our communities, giving people pride in their city and fostering a shared identity that strengthens community cohesion. I'm delighted that this year's programme is bigger than ever and provides a wide range of affordable options for families to come together and celebrate in true Geordie style. And as winter fast approaches, we continue to support residents facing difficult times. We've announced a support package of £450,000 over the next three years for a network of 48 wellbeing hubs across the city. These hubs are run by exceptional voluntary and community sector organisations, and our funding gives them much-needed security to expand their offer and their opening times for community use. This kind of work is central to our goal of becoming a marmot city, and we're teaming up with local charities and community groups using our local resources to tackle health inequalities and help build stronger, more resilient communities. And we're proudly standing up for all our communities. It was fantastic to join unison in celebrating the contributions and achievements of black women in our city during Black History Month, and the deputy leader led our second LGBTQ+ Roundtable event in October, and Alex and I joined our colleagues across the river in Gateshead in signing up to the first-ever international LGBTQ+ solidarity declaration to reaffirm our unwavering commitment to people of all genders and sexual orientations and reject all forms of persecution and discrimination. And the past month also marked the one-year anniversary of the tragic passing of Archie York in those dreadful events at Violet Close. The lives of dozens of families were forever changed 12 months ago, when a mindless act of criminality devastated a community. Our teams have continued to support those residents throughout, and marking the first anniversary of Archie's passing, plans are being developed to create a nature trail in his honour. I'd like to thank everyone who's worked closely with Archie's parents to make this happen, and I'd again like to thank all officers who supported our communities in the response to those awful events. I send my sincerest condolences to all of Archie's loved ones and those who were affected by what took place a year ago. Looking ahead, we're working closely with government on a number of fronts to represent both Newcastle's achievements and our potential, and to lobby for fair and effective support for our city. We're working with MHCLG and the Home Office on our approach to creating the right mix of homes for our growing and diverse communities. We're also working with the Department for Science- the Department for Science, Innovation and Technology on ways they can support our ambition to use new and emerging technologies to better serve our communities. And we continue to lobby government for fair funding, individually and via the Local Government Association, with our neighbouring councils, through Segoma and via the Core Cities Network. Notwithstanding some of the challenges we continue to face, Newcastle is, in my opinion, the best city in the world. We should rightly be proud of our city and our people, and I make no apology that I will use every opportunity I have to fight for it and to promote it. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Right, we have six questions. They're all written here. I'm going to try and have them through that... Oh, councillor Hoodo, is there a reason you're standing there?
Because I put in a question.
Oh. Well, you're not on the list, I'm afraid, and we already have six questioners here, so sorry about that. Thank you.
Must submit it. Right.
So I'm going to take one. I'm going to alternate between each side, because there's three from each side. So the first one is from councillor Burn. It's going to be answered by councillor Samad.
Okay. Thank you, Lord Mayor. There's a theme to my questions tonight, which is about accountability. How can residents know whether the Mercury Prize event was worth the public money that was spent on it? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Samad?
Thank you for your question. I'm assuming that you mean the worth over and above the financial return on investment that will be shared in the findings of an independently-produced impact assessment, since this was mentioned in the cabinet statement. As an aside, that report will examine the economic and social value that the Mercury Prize and supporting fringe activities brought to our city, and I'll be happy to calculate it, circulate it, once I have the final copy. But since that was already noted in the cabinet statement, as I said, I'm assuming you're giving me the opportunity to draw council's attention to the priceless wealth of unique opportunities and experiences that the prize and fringe gave so many local musicians, creatives, students and audiences by showcasing our local talent on the national stage through live performances, workshops, school activities and industry events. Our impact report will capture all of that, so thank you again for giving me the opportunity to remind council that the fantastic impact of events like the Mercury Prize goes beyond driving tourism, boosting businesses and creating jobs for residents. It creates life experiences, joy, ambition and a pride for people in Newcastle. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Samad. Sorry, there's no supplementaries on this, I'm afraid.
No, it's not a supplemental, it's just a point of explanation that...
Councillor Burn, you cannot ask a supplemental question, please. Thank you.
That wasn't what I asked.
The next question is from councillor Powers, please, to be answered by councillor Story.
Apologies, Lord Mayor, you threw me off by asking them in a different order than what I had in my list. I thought it was coming later. Keep me in my toes.
You're a professional.
Lord Mayor is somebody who has a couple of friends who are former care leavers in Newcastle. I was particularly wanting to note how Newcastle has been rightly recognised, in my personal opinion, for our support of care leavers. So I was wanting to ask if the cabinet member could set out what Newcastle is doing particularly well for care leavers, including what outcomes they're achieving, and explain how we tend to go further to improve housing, education, employment and health support for care-experienced young people.
Thank you. Councillor Story to respond?
Thank you very much, councillor Powers, for the question. Newcastle has been recognised nationally for the work that we're doing around care leavers, and I cannot take credit for that. That is something that the staff are delivering on, and it's something that I think we've got a high level of cross-party engagement and work on. Every care leaver in this city is assigned a support worker to help them transition to independence with continuity of support, recognising the need to expand and increase our workforce. We've employed an additional four posts recently, and we've redesigned the service. And since April 2025, there's been a designated care leaver team to work with young people. In relation to work readiness, that's something that's incredibly important, and we've been investing in pre-employment training, CV workshops. We've got a dedicated referral pathway for care leavers to ensure that support is consistent and tailored to their needs. In terms of raising aspirations, we're strengthening links with local colleges and universities to promote higher education, and we've got some of the highest numbers of care leavers in university in the North East region. With regards to improved transition planning, we've got enhanced coordination with housing services and into independent living, and our staying close project is expanded to include mentors and dedicated support there. You may recall that on October the 2nd, well, you probably don't, but I'll tell you that we did, in this chamber, following consultation with care leavers, I presented a motion that having a care experience should be a protected characteristic, and every single one of you supported that motion. We wrote to government and we lobbied, and as a result, a cross-directive task and finish group was established, supported by six thematic working groups around housing, education, parenting and to treat care experience as a protected characteristic. I'm very, very proud to say that that work has really been recognised, and myself and Stephen, one of our care-experienced mentors and young people, has been invited to the House of Lords next week, where we'll be able to give a presentation about the exemplar work that Newcastle has led on. And I also just wanted to say, although we weren't successful and haven't been successful so far in lobbying government to ensure that having a care experience is a protected characteristic, we are not going to give up on that. We've lobbied and we are going to take that to the Lords, and we will be, you know, leading the charge on that, because there is nobody, I think, who deserves that more. Our care-experienced young people face multiple disadvantages, and that needs to be recognised in law. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Story. Councillor Hartley to ask a question which councillor Kilgawa will respond to?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Kilgawa, I mean this in the friendliest possible way, but given that the governance review, as agreed in September, stated cabinet statements should be forward-facing, why does this report contain no such forward-facing information for five of the eight cabinet portfolios, and only very limited information from the other three? And can the leader explain how councillors are expected to scrutinise cabinet direction or plans in the absence of this information or an agreed and adequate council plan?
Thank you. Councillor Kilgawa?
Thank you, councillor Hartley, for your question. As I said just a few months ago, this is only our second cabinet statement, and I've made clear when presenting both that this is a new process and it'll take time to embed, and I'm always happy to take constructive feedback on ways to improve things. However, the move to a monthly cabinet statement was approved by council to do a lot more than look forward, as your question would suggest. Council approved council statements, as recommended by the Centre for Governance and Scrutiny in their review, to, and I quote, "update on current key issues, including recent decisions, achievements, local consultations, government announcements and up-and-coming decisions." This statement does all of those things. Cabinet statements have replaced portfolio reports, not replicated them. They highlight key areas we want to bring to council's attention, good and bad, to allow timely and up-to-date discussions on current issues. They don't set out every action or decision we take. The statement is responsive, reporting on recent activity and horizon scanning for issues that may affect us as a city or as a council. The statement doesn't, and is not meant to, replicate our forward plan for decision-making, which is already published monthly, our cabinet meeting papers, which are already published monthly, or our formal scrutiny processes and their work programmes for structured examination of policy performance and decision-making. And finally, you're wrong to say that there is an absence of an agreed council plan. We have a live council plan in place until 2027. And as you know, I've tried to work cross-party to reach agreement on an updated council plan, but it became very clear that despite a great deal of time and effort from council officers, opposition groups were not prepared to endorse a revised plan, regardless of efforts to address their concerns. The fact that the opposition have not been able to agree a new council plan that has been endorsed by cabinet does not change the approved purpose of the cabinet statement.
Okay, thank you very much. Can I call on councillor Wright, please, to ask a question of councillor Walker?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The cabinet statement refers to the continued development of the wellbeing hubs across the city. Could the cabinet member outline progress in expanding this network, how we are ensuring consistency of offer across neighbourhoods, and how these hubs are helping residents connect with other local services? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Walker?
Thank you for your question. Over the past three years, Newcastle has seen the development of a resilient and grown network of 48 wellbeing hubs operated by the voluntary community sector and predominantly located in areas of higher deprivation and based on the needs in the community. Through a preventative focus of offering safe and inclusive environments that promote wellbeing, facilitate community connection and support navigation of wider services, wellbeing hubs offer a place-based response to economic and social hardship, particularly loneliness and isolation. Through their trusted presence in local neighbourhoods, wellbeing hubs provide protective factors in mental wellbeing, such as social activities, friendship, shared meals and weekly routines, as well as helping residents navigate and connect with the essential support from housing and benefits advice to food provision and digital resources. Initially established in response to the cost of living crisis, wellbeing hubs have evolved into our flagship intervention for public mental health promotion and early intervention. They play a vital role in building community resilience and improving access to services that address the wider determinants of health, based on our wellbeing hub compact and charter. These set out the minimum standards of delivery and expectations and enables network members to access relevant training, including making every contact count, and to collectively serve our residents, whether through direct provision, hosting outreach services or offering brief advice and signposting. Through embedding our compact and charter, we ensure that every resident walking into a wellbeing hub, no matter the location, can expect a welcome space, meaningful connection and improving early access to support services. In recognition of the significant impact the wellbeing hub model has had since their establishment, Newcastle City Council's Public Health has committed £450,000 over the next three years to both sustain and expand the network. This investment will not only support existing hubs to promote community wellbeing that is tailored to local residents through a multi-year funding award, but will enable the development of new wellbeing hubs, particularly where there is limited coverage or increased community need, either geographically or for a specific population. This investment consists of targeted funding to support VCS improve in their facilities and resources, and incentivised and enabled provision where offers are currently limited or emerging. This gives hubs the stability to focus on less chasing resources and more on what they do best, delivering inclusive, community-rooted support that strengthens wellbeing, tackles inequalities and builds resilience across Newcastle's neighbourhoods. For example, to increase support during the Christmas period, which historically has very limited local VCS provision, our Winter Wellbeing Fund was launched on Friday, and we've already had assurance that some of our hubs will now be able to improve local support available to those who may find it particularly hard or isolating during the festive period. Responding to VCS feedback to ensure that staff and volunteers across the network feel supported and valued, we've also committed to invest in the wellbeing of staff within the hubs. Recognising the VCS workforce are often at risk of health and social inequalities, such as low-paid work or caring responsibilities. And finally, connecting residents to other local services is a core function of the wellbeing hubs, aligned to our hubs' staff and training and network meetings that support sharing good practice and connected services. Hubs also regularly receive bulletins containing public health updates and opportunities to engage with other community initiatives across the city. We're also exploring opportunities for co-location of wellbeing hubs and wider community support and provision. This helps to ensure that residents are not only supported in the moment but also empowered to access wider services that improve long-term wellbeing.
Thank you, councillor Walker. Councillor Ferguson, please, to ask a question of councillor Story?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question relates to post-16 SEND transport policy. Between the publication of the agenda for cabinet and the start of the meeting, what information was cabinet provided with, over and above the clear negative consultation response that set out families' concerns, which made it clear just how unpopular the changes to post-16 SEND transport are, that ultimately led to you changing your minds, ironically given the chutzpah we've heard earlier, at the 11th hour and rejecting the paper, not 70 minutes before the cabinet meeting, but in the middle of it?
Thank you. Councillor Story?
Thank you for that. I knew you would not be able to resist having a go. But I won't, because that's not my style. So I am just gonna, you know, just do it as I usually would. I could, could change, but I won't. Took an oath not to. So what changed? Well, councillor Ferguson, there was no new information provided. It was a political decision. Cabinet were unanimous in their decision, and I want to thank every single one of my colleagues in cabinet for the support that they gave around that decision. Cabinet recognises the pressures that face the council, driven by increased demand and rising costs particularly associated with SEND transport. We remain committed to supporting vulnerable learners, and initiatives like the independent travel training and personal transport budgets have been proven to have good outcomes and to use resources efficiently. And these should be expanded, but not at the expense of existing entitlements. Our approach will protect access and equity whilst promoting independence, reducing carbon impact and ensuring financial sustainability. I'd just like to kind of read out to council just one of the emails that I received following this decision. And this was from a family who I'd had ongoing conversations and emails with throughout the two-year period while we've been developing this policy. "Thank you so much for supporting special needs families. Thank you for meeting us and for listening. Well done, Newcastle City Council. We did the right thing."
Thank you very much. One more question from councillor Barry Stanners. And that also was to councillor Story?
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. My question is also on post-16 SEND transport. The decision to maintain it has been very widely welcomed across the whole city, and in particular in my own ward, Leamington. Can the cabinet member please confirm that the work to promote independent travel and to provide specialist training for young people will continue despite this, and explain how the council will monitor the impact of these initiatives over the coming year? Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Story?
I'll try and keep this brief, because I feel I've probably already trespassed into some of this territory. The decision to maintain post-16 SEND transport, as you point out, has been rightly, sorry, that you rightly pointed out, has been welcomed by families across Newcastle. It reflects the council's commitment to balancing financial pressures and the needs of our most vulnerable learners. I can confirm that we will continue to promote independent travel training, and, you know, for a lot of young people, what we're hearing back from them is it's about autonomy, it's about self-determination, and they're feeling incredibly proud when they learn that new skill. We'll be continuing with personal transport budgets, and that approach is really going to be strengthened. We want to promote choice for families and children, to develop confidence, life skills and independence of our young people, whilst generating cost savings for the council. We will ask for the following to be monitored and reported on in terms of independent travel training, and that will be personal transport budgets, individual transport assessments and proportion of whole for each, sorry, and a proportion of whole for each of the independent travel solutions on offer. So there'll be a range of different measures.
So there'll be a range of different measures in place that we will be able to monitor. And some of that will be qualitative case studies and feedback from children and families themselves about what that's been like. And, you know, as you know, we work very closely with families, and they'll be involved in the monitoring of that as well. One of the things that I have learnt over the last two years, three years, is that families who have children with special educational needs are some of the most dedicated families to ensuring the rights of their children. And I've learnt a great deal from them, so I just wanted to say that as well.
Thank you very much. That concludes item 11. Move on to item 12, appointments. Does the council agree to the appointments as put? Agreed? Notice of motions? Councillor Burns?
Lord Mayor, I'd like to request that we suspend the guillotine for an additional 30 minutes this evening, just to nine o'clock.
Okay, is that agreed? No? Linda, can we start a vote, please? As everyone who can voted, voted. Oh, it's still going, right, sorry. Right. Can I ask those of you who weren't able to vote electronically, who are in favour of suspending the guillotine, please show? Thank you. Those of you who are against, please show? Okay, thank you. Any abstentions? No? We have 27 in favour of suspending the guillotine and 34 against. So we still have 10 minutes. So we'll move on to notice of motion 13. I see councillor Donnelly standing there. Crackdown on illegal motorbikes. Can I call on councillor Donnelly to move the motion to be seconded by councillor Tracy Mitchell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll try and be extremely quickly. While selected motorbikes may be increasingly popular across the city, they are plaguing and terrorising neighbourhoods with antisocial behaviour and dangerous riding. This motion simply tries to steer the debate in discussion, to strive to get action. Many of these e-bikes and e-scooters have been modified, which means that they can easily travel between 40 and 70 miles per hour. These vehicles are driven on the footpath and cause a real nuisance. They're often weave between traffic. They've got no road tax MOT and are a real harm to the public. In the past, it was always the case that the combustion engine bike would cause problems, but at least you could hear them. Now with these e-bikes, they come from behind, you cannot hear them. And unlike the earlier speaker which we had addressing council this evening with regards to pavement parking, they're not travelling at four miles per hour, like Mrs Walker. Lord Mayor, what we ask for is we ask that the police need to show the effectiveness of the drones and the technology which has currently been used to stamp out this reckless behaviour, launch a crackdown on the seizure of these vehicles. And the government needs to tighten up legislation. The difficulty with government is what they tend to do is allow these items to go on the market. But the legislation should prevent that. So before they actually get onto the streets, they should be stopped until everything's sorted out. So what this motion does is it calls for action to safeguard our residents across the city, make sure that city residents feel safe on the streets, walking on the pavements. Now, looking at the amendments, amendment one tends to remove a lot of the implications for asking for results. So for instance, it wants to remove the monthly update to elected members from the police with regards to the benefits of the drones. Unless anybody can tell me otherwise? Has anybody had an update as to the benefits of the drones that's being used? I think it's unfortunately a retrograde step to take that away. It also takes away the fact that there's no campaign with regards to the police striving to get action in the run-up to Christmas. Don't buy one of these bikes for Christmas, because if you do, it's going to be crushed. You're going to end up with points on your licence, and it's also going to be seized. With regards to the amendment two, I've got to say that's slightly more friendly, because it just literally changes the wording at the beginning of the motion. I've got to say all the outcomes are exactly the same, so I don't mind that. But can we please look towards getting something done for the footpaths used for the pedestrians and not for these illegal e-bikes? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Donnelly? Councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The issue of illegal motorbikes has been a problem for a long time now. It blights people's lives with the noise pollution of them riding on grass areas, sometimes for a couple of hours, or making residents feel unsafe walking in the community. They drive dangerously weaving through people and traffic. It's difficult to report this crime as often not reported. I know residents who have said something to the bikes and they've been verbally abused. And I have to say, a few years ago, myself was intimidated by either having my photo taken or pretending to have my photo taken from a person on a bike. And then a few minutes later, I was walking with my youngest son and he swerved towards me on a pavement. I must admit, I was worried, as I could be recognised and what could happen, as my address is widely known. So it's not surprising that residents do not report them or wait on the phone for sometimes over an hour, and then by that point, they've disappeared. And it is really with great sadness. A lady was knocked over by a bike in Beaumont Terrace in Westerhope, and I really do wish her speedy recovery. It highlights how dangerous illegal and e-bikes are on pavements. It can cause death, life-changing injuries, or injuries which mean people have to take time off work, resulting in financial burdens not expected and sometimes cannot afford. And there is no insurance to help, so the consequences are high and it should be seen as taken seriously. My dismay of walking on Northumberland Street daily and the number of e-bikes which are ignore signs that cycling is not allowed, and it's so dangerous when they're weaving through pedestrians, especially with all the works. There really needs to be a stricter implementation of the rules to make sure that people actually do realise that this is a serious antisocial behaviour. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Mitchell. Can I call on councillor Irham Ali to move the first amendment to be seconded by councillor Samard?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really, really do welcome the sentiments of the motion. I just want to respond to councillor Donnelly with regards to the removal of point one. This council doesn't hold the mandate to the work of the police or the PC. However, there are current mechanisms of reporting from both the police and the PCC. We've seen the PCC come here and report to us, and the police obviously sit on the crime and safety panel. So we do get regular reporting from both of them. I also just want to say for the record that it is extremely important to point out it is a minority of people that are misusing these vehicles and not the majority. Criminal activity, Lord Mayor, involving electric bikes and scooters is a growing issue across the UK. Tackling all forms of antisocial behaviour is a priority for this administration. And it is clear that illegal usage of electric bikes, scooters, and motorbikes is causing serious disturbances and risk for our residents. Sorry, I've got no breath. We want all our residents to feel safe in their neighbourhoods. They shouldn't have to worry about modified bikes being ridden illegally and causing disturbance and fear in their neighbourhoods. The illegal usage of these vehicles and the dangerous manner in which they operate simply will not be tolerated by this administration. We continue to work with Northumbria Police to gather and share intelligence to prevent this issue from happening. And we will continue to work and encourage residents to speak up and share their concerns about motorbike and e-bike-related antisocial behaviour. Northumbria Police has dedicated teams to combat and clamp down on illegal motorbike usage, deploying officers to hotspot areas, issuing dispersal notices, seizing and destroying vehicles, and arresting individuals. Despite the committed work in Northumbria Police, we know it is often an uphill battle for given the increasing usage of these vehicles on our streets. We know this issue is not happening in isolation and requires more to be done on the national stage to strengthen existing legislation on the use and sale of these vehicles. Government has strict laws governing the use of e-bikes, with them needing to meet certain requirements, including that their motors mustn't exceed 250 watts and must cut out when the bike reaches 15.5 miles per hour. Despite this, it is important that we work with government to strengthen these existing laws, linking the usage of these vehicles to the Highways Act and requiring licence and checks for the sale of these vehicles. And this is the addition to the amendment and the reason why I'm bringing this. Above strengthening existing legislation, we must also find ways of changing the behaviour of individuals who carry out this antisocial behaviour. We know that often it is not the vehicles themselves that are the problem, but the individuals who use them, with vehicles being illegally modified and that even legal ones are used in illegal and antisocial ways. This is why we want Northumbria Police to regularly update this chamber the actions they are taking to tackle this issue. Having this regular dialogue and information sharing will mean we can approach this issue jointly, identify individuals or hotspots of this activity, encourage behaviour change, and putting in place the right targeted action to reduce potential risks to our residents and to ensure they can live without fear, disturbance, and risk. The amendment has more asks of the government, and I hope that this amendment will be unanimously voted on tonight. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Samard?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. The increase in e-bikes, e-scooters, and electric motorbikes, particularly those that are illegally modified, is a growing safety concern for both motorists and pedestrians. These vehicles often exceed legal speed and power limits, with some reaching speeds of 40 miles an hour to 70 miles an hour, and are operated without licences, insurance, road tax, or MOTs, using footpaths and weaving through traffic, creating significant risks for pedestrians and other road users. Residents have expressed a clear desire to reclaim their streets and neighbourhoods from the fear and disruption caused by this behaviour. The council supports the promised deployment of drones and advanced surveillance technology to identify offenders and hold them accountable. We are asking the police and crimes commissioner and chief constable to provide regular updates to council on actions taken to reduce risks to the public, including the use and impact of new technologies. We support lobbying government to strengthen legislation around the use of these vehicles, linking it to the Highways Act. The council also calls for the strengthened legislation around the sale of such vehicles, including the introduction of licence checks at the point of sale. We encourage collaboration with Trading Standards to monitor and control the potential illegal supply of these machines. I urge members to support this amendment, and I'm happy to second the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Cookson? Second amendment? Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm grateful for councillor Donnelly for bringing this motion and fully supportive of the efforts to resolve the issue of illegal electric motorbikes. As councillor Donnelly pointed out or recognised, this was a friendly amendment, to simply clarify the terminology. Terminology that's been repeated again and again in this chamber tonight during this debate. E-bikes, and indeed legal e-scooters, such as the Neuron scooters, have an important part to play in decarbonising transport and enabling modal shift. We, as city councillors, should always be mindful that words matter, and our choice of language should always be carefully considered. It is the unlicensed, unregistered electric motorbikes that are the problem here and need addressing. Indeed, modifying a legal e-bike, either by increasing the power of the motor or by introducing a throttle or removing the neater pedal, is what makes e-bikes into electric motorbikes and therefore subject to the same construction and use, the same registration and licensing requirements that have been raised earlier. I just want to ensure that residents who are thinking about buying a legal e-bike aren't discouraged in any way, and this amendment seeks to clarify the terminology and not to demonise legitimate e-bike users. Thank you. Right, well, when I called the last councillor, the guillotine hadn't fallen, but now it has. Now, the rules say I allow anyone else who's reserved the right to speak and then allow the mover their right of reply. As we've had one amendment proposed and seconded, and we've had another amendment half-proposed but not seconded, it seems only right that I call on councillor Kane, as if he'd reserved the right to speak, if he wants to speak. And then I'll call on councillor Donnelly for their right of reply.
I'll be very brief, Lord Mayor. Like several people in the council, I am an e-bike owner. It's sustainable transport, it's an e-cargo bike, it's perfectly within the rules. And it boils my blood when in the press they have all these terrible headlines about e-bikes. And when you read below the headline, it's always electric motorbikes. So that was the main purpose. I would also like to put all of this in context as well that the road safety statistics say risks to pedestrians, 98% of pedestrian deaths involve collisions with four-wheeled vehicles. So it is a pain. I think we should make sure that we take it in context. The biggest risk to pedestrians is still cars, vans, buses, et cetera. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kane. Councillor Donnelly?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. And I accept what's been said with regards to the wording. This motion looks to improve public safety, and I think we're all in agreement with that. It also looks to put pedestrians first, which we're all in agreement with that. It wishes to stamp down the issues of the illegal motorbike activity, which we're all in agreement with that. It wants to reduce antisocial behaviour, which we all accept that. So tonight here, we've got a motion which tries to put the pavements back with the pedestrians. And also, as we heard earlier with the speaker, Mrs Walker, it's to reclaim the pavements, not for parked vehicles, but for pedestrians, and for pedestrians to use them safely. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Does council agree amendment one? Does council agree amendment two? No? Right, okay, we'll need a vote then. Linda? What? Right. Well, everybody said yes to amendment one, didn't they? No, oh, sorry. Sorry, I'll get me in the logstone. Okay, well, we're going to have to vote on amendment one then. Okay. Those of you who haven't managed to vote electronically, who are in favour, please show. Okay, thank you. Those who haven't managed to vote are against, please show. Thank you. Anyone abstaining? No? Okay, 34, four, and 25 against. Amendment two? Can we have the vote on that, please? Okay. Can I ask those of you who are in favour, please show? Okay, thank you. Those of you who are against that amendment, please show? Any abstentions? No? Okay, that's 25, four and 34 against. Thank you. So we'll now go through each of the other items in turn. I will ask the movers... Oh, sorry, what? Oh, sorry. Thank you for all, Lord Mayor. So is the motion as amended agreed? Thank you. Right, I'll now go through each of the other items, and I'll ask the proposer if they want to deal with it tonight, or whether they want to hold it over till the next meeting. So item 14, international aid, councillor Taylor? Deal with it tonight? Okay, thank you very much. Is there no amendment? No. Is the motion agreed? Thank you. Item 15, councillor Frew? Would you like to deal with it tonight, or? Yes, okay, thank you very much. Oh, sorry, is that formally seconded? Sorry, I didn't do that with yours either, councillor. Thank you. Is councillor agree the motion? Okay, thank you very much. Item 16? Yeah, I was hoping you hadn't noticed that. Did I hear councillor Ashby second the motion? No, he's not there. Oh, it was councillor Ferguson, okay, thank you. Item 16? Oh, is that the one that's withdrawn? Sorry. Item 17, councillor Hartley? Thank you very much. Oh, we have an amendment. So, well, hang on, first of all, seconded, who seconded this motion? Sorry, councillor Donnelly, thank you. Councillor Coles, to move the amendment? Right, okay, seconded by councillor Kane? Yeah, sound, thank you. Is the amendment agreed? Is the amended motion agreed? Thank you. Item 18, ward publicity? Councillor Mark Mitchell? Defer, okay, thank you. Item 19, movement strategy? Councillor Cookson? Tonight, okay, thank you. Seconded, councillor Kane, yeah, okay, thank you very much. Does council agree the motion? No? Okay. Can we have another vote, please, Linda? Okay, move on to the show of hands now. Those in favour of the motion, please show. I never saw it. Okay, thank you. Those against the motion, please show? Any abstentions? Okay, Lynne, okay, thank you. Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, there are 24 in favour and 34 against. Thank you very much. Next, item 20, 106 funds, councillor Stone? Defer, okay, thank you. 21, project Orpheus, councillor Higgins? Deferred. I'll look forward to it at the next meeting. Oh? Yes?
Lord Mayor, I wonder if I might be permitted understanding order 23 to make a point of personal explanation in relation to an earlier speech? In the discussion on the amendment on item nine, it was suggested that Labour were first made aware of the amendment 70 minutes before this meeting, but as I'm sure officers will be aware, and those of us who were copied in, in accordance with standing order 16D, all group leaders, including the leader of council, received our amendment at 13:01 yesterday, not 70 minutes before, but 28 hours and 59 minutes before. I would not be able to correct the records at the next meeting if I did not say that tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're nearly at the end, council. Sorry? Right. Okay. Right. Yes, well, thank you, yes. Well, I presume the amendment still went in according to standing orders, so, you know. If you want more notice, we'll change standing orders. Right, before we go, council, I just have a small statement to make regarding the accessibility issues. Officers have commissioned an accessibility audit of the council chamber, which will take into account the listed building status and give some recommendations and options and adjustments that may be possible. An assessment of the audiovisual equipment in the chamber has also been undertaken. Members will be updated once those assessments are complete. So thank you for attending tonight, look forward to seeing you at the next meeting on the 3rd of December, and as many of you as possible on the 9th of November for Remembrance Sunday. Thank you.